Please take your seats. Take any and all conversations outside of the chambers. Mr. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the stated meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Majority Leader Keith Powers. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us today. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola. Aviles.
Present.
Ayala.
Present.
Baron.
Here.
Bacher.
Here.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers. Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa. Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias. Felice.
Here.
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks. Holden.
Here.
Hudson. Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Present.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Here.
Ose.
Here.
Palladino. Wrestler.
Here.
Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley. Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Here.
Stevens. Ung.
Present.
Hanks. Velazquez. Vernikoff. Williams. Juan.
Present.
Riley. Williams.
Present.
Hudson.
Present.
Stevens.
Here.
Thank you. It's okay. Velazquez.
Here.
Farias. Yeager.
Here.
Morelli.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We'll now hear today's invocation, which will be delivered by Rabbi Hayyam Schwartz from the Rabbinical Seminary of America located at seventy-six oh one, one hundred and forty-seventh Street in Flushing. Welcome.
Oh vinu shabbat shemayim, oh heavenly father. Grant wisdom, sensitivity, and understanding to the men and women of this great assemblage, the City Council of the City of New York. It is these fifty-one members who debate what is good and who make the laws for the residents of this great city. Please help them to debate honestly and with the best of intentions for their constituents. Please guide their hands and their hearts to craft proper legislation that will ensure the safety and prosperity of all who dwell in our five boroughs. Provide inspiration and creativity to the members of this great council as they chart a new direction forward for all the citizens of New York. Grant safety and security to our municipal workers, to the brave members of the New York City Police and Fire Departments, sanitation, corrections, and parks departments, who venture forth into the city each day to carry out the will and direction of this council. Protect them from harm in the performance of their duties. Indeed, protect all the millions of residents of this great city as they go about their business and as they raise their families, hopefully in safety and in peace. May the words of King David in Psalms one forty-five ring true for all New Yorkers. Poseach es yedehah, um azbiel lechol chay rots own. You open your hand and satisfy the desire of every living thing. May all our wishes, hopes, and desires be fulfilled for the ultimate good of all, and let us say amen.
Thank you, and thank you for being with us today. I'm going to now ask Councilmember Kalman Yeager to spread the invocation for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Honored to rise today on behalf of our colleague, Councilman Jim Gennaro, who was not able to join us in person and to speak on behalf of the rabbi. A Bronx native, Rabbi Chaim Schwartz is a rabbi at the Rabbinical Seminary of America, Yeshiva Chafetz Chaim of Queens. Founded in Brooklyn, as all great things are, more than eight decades ago, the seminary is one of the oldest in the United States. It is presently located in Councilman Gennaro's district in the Kew Gardens neighborhoods. The seminary's beginnings were not on these shores. The seminary was originally founded in Rodden, Poland, under the leadership of the Chafetz Chaim in the late eighteen hundreds. The Chafetz Chaim, after whom the Rabbinical Seminary of America is named, was a renowned and revered Torah giant. During the Holocaust, some of the students of the yeshiva were among the fortunate few who made their way through Poland, Lithuania, into Russia, over the Trans-Siberian Railroad to Vladivostok on the Russian shore with the Sea of Japan. They were then able to set sail for Tsaruga, Japan, and ultimately Kobe, Japan, before their final destination of Shanghai, China, where they, some of these students, were able to live out the war and ultimately be saved. My grandfather was one of these fortunate few. Students at RSA are carefully trained for Jewish communal service. More than ninety-five percent of RSA graduates ultimately engage in communal work. They dedicate their lives to this city and to this nation. RSA is one of the many stellar examples of New York's yeshivas, and Rabbi Schwartz himself immersed in communal work. In addition to his service to the community and to his yeshiva and to his religious community, he also serves on the executive board of his local civic association and participates in countless other causes. On behalf of our colleague, Councilman Gennaro, I'm honored to rise to introduce Rabbi Schwartz today, and I ask for unanimous consent that the invocation be spread upon the record of these proceedings.
Thank you. We'll now have the adoption of the minutes by Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted as printed.
Thank you. We'll now have messages and papers from the mayor.
Pre-considered M eighty-six through pre-considered M ninety, various appointments.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
Ms. Ninety-one and ninety-two.
Cubbed on call-up vote, I would now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Bacher.
Aye.
Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
Aye.
Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Ose.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson Jordan.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Velazquez.
Aye.
Vernikoff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Yeager.
Aye.
Morelli.
Aye.
Gennaro.
I just came on, we're doing the land use call-ups?
Yes.
Okay, I ask unanimous consent to vote on the land use call-ups in the entirety of the general order.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I vote aye, and I thank you for this accommodation and thank the members for this accommodation. And I thank Councilmember Yeager for speaking about, you know, for the invocation, and I guess that's it, I voted, and I'm good to go, right?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Powers.
Aye.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of forty-eight, sorry, forty-nine in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, everyone, and happy birthday, Councilmember Sandra Ung. And Jennifer Gutierrez, happy birthday to Hazel's mom! I want to begin today by acknowledging the twenty-first anniversary of the attacks on September eleventh, two thousand and one. This past Sunday, we joined families at the World Trade Center to grieve the loss of loved ones, uplift their memories, and reflect on how the events of that day continue to impact our city and country. None of us will ever forget where we were or what we were doing when we witnessed or learned of the attacks on nine eleven, the emotions we felt that day, and the rebuilding of our city in the subsequent months and years. It is critical that we continue to honor the memories of those lost. Equally important is supporting the survivors, including the families who lost mothers and fathers, sisters and brothers, friends and neighbors to this tragedy. Twenty-one years later, and it is still not any easier to think about what happened on that fateful day. We must also always remember the brave first responders who risked their lives to save their fellow New Yorkers in official capacity, and those who sacrificed to serve simply because of their heroic humanity. We had first responders coming from all over this country to help New Yorkers as well. So today and every day, we stand with you and your families to honor your sacrifice and service to this city. We must ensure that everyone impacted by nine eleven and its aftermath gets the health care that they need and they deserve. This past weekend, our city celebrated the labor movements and leaders that fought for so many of the benefits we enjoy in the workplace today during the annual New York City Labor Day Parade. As the daughter of two longtime union workers, I was raised in a home and community that understands the importance of organized labor. From the forty-hour work week to workers' compensation and paid sick leave, we gained so much as a result of our nation's labor movements and struggles. As we honor this history, it is important that we recognize the ongoing fights today for fair wages, safer workplaces, improved benefits, and the right of all workers to organize without fear of retaliation. These are essential protections that workers deserve. There's still much more work to do, but we are proud to stand alongside workers each and every day. Next week, we will also mark five years since Hurricane Maria devastated the Caribbean, particularly the islands of Dominica, Saint Croix, and Puerto Rico. We remember the victims and the people on the beautiful islands that are still being affected by this tragedy. September is a month when we celebrate so many of our city's diverse cultural communities. On September fifth, we marched down Eastern Parkway for the Fifty-Fifth Annual West Indian Day Parade for the first time in three years. Yeah. And it was an amazing celebration, full of life and energy. We all felt it on the Parkway. We recognized the richness of our West Indian communities that make New York City so vibrant and so special. Just a few days ago, our Asian-American community celebrated the Mid-Autumn Festival with friends and family. It's a time to give thanks for prayer and to spend time with loved ones. So whether you celebrated with lanterns, mooncakes, or any other traditions, I hope all New Yorkers observing this holiday had a wonderful festival. Tomorrow marks the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, when we uplift the contributions and achievements of Latino communities across this country. New York City is home to two point five million Latino residents of diverse backgrounds, cultures, and traditions. We also recognize the groundbreaking Latino leaders in this body who continue to serve this city with such amazing passion and dedication, and I look forward to celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with all of our New Yorkers celebrating. Also, yeah, we can do that. Also, just a reminder, everyone, this Saturday is the Fifty-Third Annual African American Day Parade held in Harlem, N.Y.C. I will be there in the Village. This year, we're honoring Black health professionals, so please come and join us as we celebrate the indelible contributions of the African-American community that we've all made to our city and across our country. I'm looking forward to it. Again, we've got some great parades, festivals, and celebrations to look forward to. And finally, September twenty-first is National Black Women's Equal Pay Day, symbolizing just how far into the year Black women must work to be paid what men were paid during the previous year. In fact, Black women are paid fifty-eight cents for every dollar that white men make. As the first Women Majority Council, we're committed to narrowing these disparities and achieving the equity that women deserve. We will not rest until women, especially women of color, are paid what we are owed. Now. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. Today, we are voting on several legislative land use finance and rules items. We will be voting on the following land use items. Eighteen fifty-nine Strang Avenue will facilitate the construction of a new single-story commercial retail development and include twelve accessory parking spaces in Councilmember Riley's district. Halitz North rezoning will facilitate a significant new mixed-use development on the waterfront of the Halitz Point Peninsula in northwest Queens. It will include a projected one thousand three hundred and forty housing units, three hundred and thirty-five permanently affordable housing units, five hundred and twenty-five parking spaces, five hundred and twenty-five bicycle spaces, eighteen hundred square feet of commercial use, twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet of community facility space, and approximately one acre of open space, including a waterfront explanade. The council is modifying the application to map M.I.H. Option Three, which is the deep affordability option, and to amend the site plan to restore the pedestrian walkway to its regulation width of ten feet in Councilmember Caban's district. And Councilmember Caban, you did the darn thing. Just saying. A pre-considered resolution comes up also for vote on the finance items. This resolution approves an exemption from real property taxes for property located at thirty-three hundred Palmer Avenue in the Bronx in Councilmember Riley's district. The project consists of two buildings with one hundred and thirty-five units. The tax exemption will replace a soon-to-expire four-twenty-one A exemption and will keep all units' rent restricted for forty years. The AMIs will range from seventy-five percent to one hundred percent. A pre-considered resolution that approves an exemption from real property taxes for property located at seventeen hundred Harrison Avenue in the Bronx and Councilmember Sanchez's district. The project consists of one building with seventy-nine units. Currently, less than half the units are rent restricted, and with this tax exemption, all of them will be. The AMIs will range from fifty percent to eighty percent. And another pre-considered resolution that approves an exemption from real property taxes for an affiliated property located at seventeen thirty Harrison Avenue in the Bronx in Councilmember Sanchez's district. The project consists of one building with seventy-seven units. Less than half the units in this building are currently rent restricted, and with this tax exemption, all of them will be. The AMIs will similarly range from fifty percent to eighty percent. We're also voting on the rules items. Sarah Carroll for reappointment as Chair of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Gail Benjamin for appointment as a member of the New York City Planning Commission. Anthony Crowell for appointment as a member of the New York City Planning Commission. Milton Williams for appointment as a member of the Conflicts of Interest Board. Elisa Velazquez for appointment as a member of the New York City Tax and Limousine Commission, and a technical correction related to Rasmia Kermani Frye's appointment as a member of the New York City Planning Commission. Lastly, the council will vote on the following pieces of legislation. First of all, I'm so proud to sponsor Introduction four fifty-eight A, which would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to create and maintain information and resources available in all designated citywide languages for a potential patient of an abortion provider, such as information outlining methods used to provide an abortion, attendant health risks, and recovery from abortion. Additionally, the bill would require D.O.H.M.H. to conduct a language access service needs assessment, which would survey abortion providers in the city to assess the availability of language access services for abortion, the demand for such services, any funding available, preferred methods of delivery of language access, and any challenges for implementation. D.O.H.M.H. would be required to report its findings to the Speaker and the mayor with recommendations in any role the city can play in assisting abortion providers with language access services, including the feasibility of providing a city grant program. Thank you to staff Brenda McKinney, Anastasia Zmina, Sarah List, and Schmida Deschmuk. Next, we're voting on Introduction fifty-six A, sponsored by Councilmember Chi Ose, which would require D.O.H.M.H. to create a nightlife opioid antagonist program to help prevent opioid overdoses in nightclub establishments. The program would permit nightlife establishments in the city to request and retain opioid antagonists on premises for administration to patrons, staff, or individuals experiencing an opioid overdose. This bill would also require D.O.H.M.H. to offer free services and training to staff of participating nightlife establishments on the administration of opioid antagonists. Thank you, Sarah List. Additionally, Introduction five eighteen A, sponsored by Councilmember Sean Abreu, requires the Mayor's Office for Criminal Justice and the New York City Police Department to conduct a study on reducing the flow of illegal firearms into the city and submit an annual report to the Speaker and Mayor. This report will include information regarding each illegal firearm seized in New York City. And finally, we're voting on my bill, Introduction six oh two A, which defines the geographical boundaries of the Times Square area where licensed firearm owners will be restricted from carrying concealed weapons. The New York State Legislature recently amended statewide firearm regulations to establish such sensitive locations as schools, government buildings, places, places or vehicles used for public transport, and religious institutions, and designates Times Square, as determined and identified by the city, as one such location. This law became necessary after the United States Supreme Court struck down the New York State law that placed strict restrictions on who could carry concealed firearms. The boundaries, as defined by the bill, largely follow the area identified as Times Square by the official New York City tourism website. It covers the area bounded by West Forty-First Street to West Fifty-Third Street and Sixth Avenue to Eighth Avenue, and parts of Ninth Avenue and the Port Authority Bus Terminal, which includes several well-known restaurants, hotels, and theaters. Thank you to Josh Kingsley, Rachel Cordero, and Robert Calandra. Thank you for your attention. Now, I will turn it back into the hands of the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We're now going to move into the discussion of general orders. We have one person signed up. We'll call on Councilmember Baron to speak.
Thank you very much. My colleagues, I find it interesting that the least amount of shooting occurs on Times Square, but when it comes to our neighborhoods, we don't see no special legislation for the neighborhoods where a lot of the shootings are taking place. But capitalism needs Times Square to be safe so they can make some money. But be that as it may, I also want to bring your attention to the tax breaks for three projects. I'm supportive of the projects one hundred percent in the Bronx because they are affordable. But the four-twenty-one A program needs to be scrapped. We tried hard in the state. That's eighty percent affordability or eighty percent market, and twenty percent affordability. Oftentimes, twenty percent isn't even affordable. So since the mayor doesn't have money for our children and education, and since he has to do another three percent cut from all the agencies, well, don't give no more tax breaks to those who can afford to pay for it, and don't let them tell you if we don't get the tax breaks, then we can't do affordability. So that puts you in a bind, and I'm one hundred percent for unions, and we want the union jobs, and I support union jobs. But after they finish their work, we got to live with the facility that they build in our neighborhoods. And if those facilities gentrify our neighborhoods, we should say no. So I just wanted to bring some of that to your attention. I often vote for projects that have tax breaks for affordability, but I just want to make a point on this one. At some point, they shouldn't get their welfare. It's interesting when the corporations get free money, it's subsidies. When we get it, it's welfare. Either we all on welfare, or we all on subsidies. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baron. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak? Okay, thank you. We're going to now move into today's agenda. We'll move on to the report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Finance, pre-considered L.U. ninety-seven and Resil three one seven through pre-considered Land Use ninety-nine and Resolution three nineteen, tax exemptions.
Cubbed on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, Land Use eighty-eight and Resil three twenty, nineteen fifty-nine, Strang Avenue rezoning.
Cubbed on general orders.
L.U. eighty-nine through L.U. ninety-five, various applications.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section one nine seven D of the New York City Charter.
L.U. ninety-six and Resolution three twenty-one, Halitz North.
Approved with modifications and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction, Introduction fifty-six A opioid program.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Public Safety, Introduction five one Introduction 518A Illegal Firearms Report.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 602A, Times Square Identification.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, Pre-Considered M-86 and Pre-Considered Resolution 322, Milton L. Williams' Appointment.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered M-87 and Pre-Considered Resol 323, Elisa Velasquez.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered M-88 and Pre-Considered Resol 324, Anthony Crowell Appointment.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered M-89 and Pre-Considered Resol 325, Gail Benjamin Appointment.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered M-90 and Pre-Considered Resol 326, Sarah Carroll Appointment.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered Resol 315, Correction to Resolution 265.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Introduction 458A, Language Access Services.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Order Calendar, Introduction 179A.
Laid over.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deets.
Coupled on general orders. I would now ask that the Clerk take a roll, call, vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Majority Leader. So I one wanted to share with my colleagues that for 1,700 and 1,730 Harrison, which are up for an Article 11 tax exemption, they do not receive 421A, they will not receive 421A. This is a building that was rescued and sort of has been affordable to neighborhood residents since the 80s, since the times of the Bronx burning, and they are coming up for a tax, an additional tax exemption. And I am in support of this so that I can keep my neighbors in their homes. And as the Speaker has said, it's gone from less than 50% permanently affordable for 40 years to being 100% affordable at 50 to 80% AMI. And second, I wasn't here because I had a little one, but I also just want to applaud all my colleagues and thank you for the maternal and reproductive health package that passed last dated. It was meaningful to watch it from the hospital bed and very happy to see that. So with that, I want to ask for permission to couple my vote on the items on the general order calendar and my vote on land use call-ups.
Go ahead.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Areola.
Aye on all, except for Intro 602A and 458A, for which I am a no.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all, except M-88, of which I am a no.
Thank you. Ayala.
Aye on all.
Barron.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I vote no on LU 90, 91, 94, 95, and 96, the Hallett's North rezoning. 25% is affordable and 75% is market. I abstain from the pre-considered appointments of Milton Williams, Elisa Velasquez. I vote no for Anthony Crowell. I vote yes for Gail Benjamin. And I abstain from Sarah Carroll. I just don't know these individuals. And I'm voting no on principle, not for the projects, for the Bronx projects. I know they will pass, and they will get the tax breaks that's needed for the affordability, and I support that 100%. But I'm having a little protest vote or just a raising your attention vote of no for the three items that came out of the Finance Division in terms of the tax breaks. And I vote no on the item for 42nd Street and the guns.
Thank you. Butcher.
I am a no.
Brennan.
Aye on all.
Brewer.
Aye on all.
Brooks Powers. Caban.
Aye on all, with the exception of M-88, on which I vote no.
Thank you. Carr.
I vote no on Introductions 458A and 602A, and aye on the rest.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Yes and all.
Farias.
I vote aye and no.
Felice.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M-88 and M-90, where I vote no.
Apologies, Councilwoman Gutierrez, M-88? Yes?
M-90.
M-90, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Hanif.
I vote aye on all, except for pre-considered M-88, for which I vote no.
Hanks.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Holden.
Aye on all, except for Intros 458A and 602A, of which I vote no.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye on all, with the exception of M-90, for which I abstain.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Krishnan.
Aye on all, except pre-considered M-88, which I vote no.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya.
Aye on aye.
Narcisse.
Aye.
Thank you. Nurse.
I vote no on M-88 and aye on all the rest.
Thank you. O'Say.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Today, I'm so proud to be the lead sponsor of Intro 56 and that it's come to the floor today to address the fentanyl crisis here in New York City. It is a public health crisis. We are seeing New Yorkers die on a weekly basis. So I'm so happy to have colleagues in this room that care about this piece of legislation to address the fentanyl crisis here in New York City. This bill is something that is personal to me. I shared this in the committee vote yesterday, but last year, I lost a dear friend of mine to a fentanyl overdose. And this is happening all across the city, nonetheless, the United States of America. And it reminds myself, and I hope it reminds all of you, that we in the council are here to do a job. And it's not only to make the lives of New Yorkers better, but it's to save lives. So thank you so much for co-sponsoring this legislation. God knows whose life it will be saving in the future. And also, colleagues in the City Council, we are making history today. If this bill passes, I will be the youngest lead sponsor on a piece of legislation to pass a bill here in the New York City Council. So thank you. I'm sure that these men on the wall will be whirling in their graves. But thank you so much for your support on this piece of legislation. I vote aye on this, and I vote no on pre-considered M-88 and passionately vote no on pre-considered M-90. Thank you.
Thank you. Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for Intros 602A and 458A, in which I vote no.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye on all.
Richardson, Jordan.
So I'm also going to be a no on M-88, and I want to commend my colleagues for us just taking a look at appointments to City Planning Commission, not just blindly voting for them. Aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye on all, and congratulations, Councilmember O'Say and Councilmember Abreu for passing your first bills today.
Brooks Powers.
Requesting unanimous consent to record my vote.
Go ahead.
And also, permission to explain my vote. Thank you. So I'm very proud to be a co-prime sponsor alongside Councilmember Abreu and several of our colleagues on Intro 518, which will mandate the creation of a report on illegal firearm trafficking in the city. New Yorkers deserve streets free of violence, which is why we must do everything possible to address the gun violence epidemic. I'm grateful to our colleagues who have joined us on this bill and am proud to vote aye on that bill. And with that, I vote aye on all, with the exception of pre-considered Resolution 323, which is the appointment of Alyssa Velasquez to the New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Rivera.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I want to congratulate Councilmember O'Say and Abreu on your pieces of legislation. Want to also congratulate Councilmember Sanchez and Councilmember Riley on your land use application. And most importantly, I want to congratulate and give a big shout-out to Councilmember Tiffany Caban for showing true leadership on your land use project. You really delivered for your community. You approved a dilapidated vacant lot that probably would have been a last-mile center and brought in affordable housing. And regardless of the naysayers who were short-sighted, you saw the larger picture. Congratulations. I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Velasquez.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Vernikov.
Aye on all, except no on 602A and 458A.
Thank you. Williams.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Wond.
Aye on all, and I have seen from M-88 and M-90. M-88 and M-90.
Jaeger.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Of course, go ahead.
Of course, I like that. Thank you, Mr. President. It would be great if this council were here today to make it more difficult for criminals to have firearms in the city. It would be great if this council were not declaring one part of our city, as the gentleman spoke about earlier, more important to protect than every other neighborhood in our city. It would be great if we spoke with truth and clarity about a real effort to curtail crime in our city, the unlawful possession and use of firearms in our city. We're not doing any of that today. Today, as we are wont to do, we legislate for the press release, for the Twitter. And we're not doing a single real effort to end gun violence in our city, in the neighborhoods of New York, where people are getting shot and killed virtually every day, certainly frequently and more frequently than we've seen in the past. And there is no legislation here today to deal with any of that. Instead, the most heavily vetted, investigated, double-checked, triple-checked, quadruple-checked people who are getting licenses, who have a lawful right to carry a gun, are being legislated against. I don't want anybody to have guns. This is not what this is about. Not looking to go around and make sure every New Yorker has a gun. But the people who are doing the crime in the city, the people who are killing each other, are not the guys with licenses. They're not the people who have to go to One Police Plaza, get fingerprinted, get checked, have their books checked, their records checked. That's not them. That's who we are legislating about today. I'm not voting to put more guns on the streets today when I vote no on this bill. But we need to do something real about where the crime is in this city and what we're going to do about it. So with that, I vote aye on all, with the exception of Introduction 602 and 458. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Borelli.
Mr. Majority Leader and slayer of sugary drinks, may I have a brief moment? Thank you.
You can sign on to the bill, and you can have time to speak. Thank you.
Rare is it when an alignment of planetary celestial bodies lines up to produce a force that's more remarkable than me having to say I agree with our colleague, Mr. Barron, as to why we've singled out Times Square in terms of making this a gun-free zone when this is not an area ordinarily prone to gun violence. I won't regurgitate what Councilmember Jaeger had said about the constitutionality and the fight against illegal gun owners. And I won't do the Twitter argument of whether criminals are actually going to pay attention to what a sign has to say while they're committing a crime. I want to talk about whether prosecutors will actually pay attention to what a sign has to say. So as of August 1st, 2,386 individuals in this city were arrested with an illegal firearm, a gun they were not supposed to have, a gun they may have used in the commission of a crime. Of those, 1,921 were released the very next day. The very next day. So before we create a new felony that we know, thanks to some ideological beliefs by many of my colleagues and friends that we should end the carceral system, let people out of jail, not have bail, people who get arrested already with felonies, for felonies, already get out the very next day. And then what happens to them down the road? Call on prosecutors to take more cases to trial, don't give too many plea deals. To call on prosecutors to essentially throw the book at people who are the most likely to commit the most violence in our city. So with that, I will register my votes as an aye on all, except for Intros 602A, 458A, and 518A, and I wish you all a good afternoon.
Thank you. Powers.
Thank you. Just want to take a second to explain my vote and maybe offer a little bit of rebuttal to some of the comments that were just made. I don't think that the fight against guns in our city is an either-or proposition, and I think that individuals are often making it. And I don't disagree for a second that an individual who carries an illegal gun in this city, there should be consequences for that person, and we need to go after all the legal guns in the city. And at the same time, as a representative for Times Square, we have a duty and a right, as the law has changed in this year, to also protect people against the potential for someone to pull out a legal gun and potentially cause lots of harm to New Yorkers. That can be a legal and permitted gun that can also cause harm, whether they have been vetted or have gone through a background check. And also, legal guns don't come from nowhere. There are legal guns that also make it onto the streets into the hands of people who will use them legally. So I ask everybody to stop thinking about this as an either-or proposition, no matter what party you are. We have to fight illegal guns. If you fight the NRA, you have to fight against people who are carrying illegal guns in the city, and I think it goes the other way as well. I think as New Yorkers, we have a duty. I know whether you're Republican or Democrat, you can share in that, to keep people safe. And I think that the folks who are coming through Times Square, we have to keep safe every single day, whether it's from guns or from anything else, because we have a duty in this city to keep, especially in our central business district, people safe. And guns are the most unsafe part of that equation. So I very proudly vote for the -- I vote aye on all, including the bill, including Councilmember Abreu's bill, including the Speaker's bill, to tackle the gun crisis. And I do share the feeling that some have represented that we have to do more when it comes to the individuals and the people and the trafficking of illegal guns into the city. With that, I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I associate myself with all of the comments of the Majority Leader, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. We have all items on today's general order count are adopted by a vote of 51 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with exceptions of land use items 97, 98, 99, and accompanying resolutions, which are adopted by a vote of 50 in affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. Land use items 96 and Resolution 321, adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 458A, adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and zero abstentions. Intro 602A, which adopted by a vote of 43 in the affirmative, eight in the negative, and zero abstentions. M-86 in Resolution 322, adopted by a vote of 50 in affirmative, zero in the negative, one abstention. M-87, Resolution 323, adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two abstentions. M-88, Resolution 324, adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 10 in the negative, and zero abstentions. M-90 in Resolution 326, adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, three in the negative, and two abstentions. And Introduction 518A, adopted by a vote of 50 in affirmative, one negative, and zero abstentions. We have no resolutions -- oh, sorry. We now move to the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. There are no resolutions on today's agenda, so we're going to move into the general discussion. We will start with Councilmember Ose.
Just really briefly, I want to make some thank yous in terms of the passing of Intro 56. Thank you so much, Majority Leader Keith Powers, for being a co-prime sponsor. Anne Marie Foster, the entire staff of Phoenix House, Andrew Riggi and the New York City Hospitality Alliance, Ariel Pelitz and the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment and the Office of Nightlife. Thank you so much. We are doing such great work, and that's all for me.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Kagan, followed by Councilmember --
Oh, my God. And May Vuchipong Batana, my legislative director. I can't believe I forgot that.
Smart, smart, smart council member. We'll now go to Councilmember Kagan, followed by Councilmember --
Thank you, Majority Leader, for the opportunity to speak. As many of you know, in the early morning hours of Monday, a horrible tragedy occurred on the beaches of Coney Island. A young mother with a history of mental health issues drowned her own three children. Three months old Oliver, four years old Liliana, and seven-year-old Zachary. I would like to extend my deepest condolences to the entire Coney Island community. This was a preventable tragedy. I would like to point out the failures of our mental health system, which basically failed to notify Child Protective Services Administration for Children's Services of the declining mental health of the mother. She was clearly in a rough shape for a very long time. The failure of the city's Administration for Children's Services is outrageous. I will just quote the father of Zachary from the New York Times story. "It didn't matter how many times I called Child Protective Services. They would tell me, 'Oh, you don't have any real evidence,' but they did not do a real investigation. Such indifference toward children's livelihoods is totally unacceptable. We need to do better in our city to help people in these situations. Thank you to the officers of the 60th precinct who helped in the search for children. May these innocent children rest in peace." Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Menon.
Thank you. I just want to bring your attention to a intro that I'm introducing today on contracting with not-for-profits in particularly black and brown neighborhoods. We are dying from this reimbursement process. A lot of our programs don't have the money like a Good Shepherd has, 30, 40 million. So if you give Good Shepherd a million dollars, they can easily spend a million dollars. For our organizations, if we wanted to give them $100,000, they have a problem. So my bill will say, when they are awarded the money, their contract should be expedited, should be done expeditiously, and they should get every penny that we award them. And they have to count for it through receipts and every other process. Not if you have the money, then you could spend the money. And then they have to get bridge loans, and they have to make decisions whether to pay taxes or pay salaries. And for struggling communities like ours, we need all of the money upfront, and they have to account for all of it, just like every other agency has program money that they give out. You have to account for it. So if you support this bill, 654, we will be able to say to groups like Man Up Inc. and other groups that are doing great work in our communities, that you won't have to struggle every year. 50% of the money sometimes comes back because they don't have the money to spend. So I'm hoping that you could sign on to this. They have a press conference out there now. A lot of the groups are out there in support of this. But let's sign on to this bill, because some of these groups have done great work in our communities in spite of the fact that they're struggling financially. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go to Councilmember Menon, followed by Councilmember Schulman.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce two bills. Intro 685, that would create an Office of Digitalization for Small Businesses, that is co-sponsored by Councilmembers Gutierrez, Hank, Stinowit, Stevens, Vilas, Schulman, Marte, Salamanca, Lee, Ose, Ung, and the Public Advocate. And Intro 686, with Councilmember Stevens, that will expand summer youth employment. The first bill, Intro 685, would create the Office of Small Business Digitalization to address the digital divide for so many small businesses. A 2021 survey found that one in four small businesses in the U.S. do not even have a website. It's critical for our small businesses to have the ability to utilize digital tools and to be able to maximize their business potential. We have the opportunity to address this digital divide in a very straightforward and simple way through this bill. The second bill, Intro 686, introduced with our incomparable Youth Services Chair, Councilmember Stevens, expands our summer youth employment program by requiring the city to create a year-long mentorship program for participants, and expands summer youth employment by mandating that every city agency bring on summer youth proportional to their respective headcount. The bill also requires DYCD to create a mentorship program in the private sector, which would connect young people to jobs in fields like media, entertainment, hospitality, and much more. It was a pleasure and honor working with my colleague together to craft this bill. And I ask my colleagues to join me in signing on to these two bills. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Councilmember Schulman, followed by Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today is both a sad and proud day for me. My Chief of Staff, Fasia Claus, is leaving, and Friday is her last day. I'm sad to see her go, but proud that she is pursuing her passion. She single-handedly put my office together, built an amazing team, and laid the foundation for my success as a member of the City Council. I am someone who believes we are only as good as the people who work for us. I am a better member because of Fasia. I cannot thank her enough for her guidance and wisdom, and want her to know that even though she is physically leaving, she will always be a member of Team Lynn and a member of the council family. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Joseph, followed by Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today is both a sad and proud day for me. My Chief of Staff, Fasia Claus, is leaving, and Friday is her last day. I'm sad to see her go, but proud that she is pursuing her passion. She single-handedly put my office together, built an amazing team, and laid the foundation for my success as a member of the City Council. I am someone who believes we are only as good as the people who work for us. I am a better member because of Fasia. I cannot thank her enough for her guidance and wisdom, and want her to know that even though she is physically leaving, she will always be a member of Team Lynn and a member of the council family. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Joseph, followed by Councilmember Feliz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am introducing two bills, Introduction 677 and Introduction 678. When I was transitioning from UFT to City Council, there were weeks when my health insurance lapsed because of administrative delays. I shuddered at the thought of what would have happened if I had gotten into accident off my child-needed medical attention. During the time while I lost coverage because of lack of oversight, this bill will ensure agencies to expedite all process related to providing continuing health insurance for city employees who transfer employment from one agency to another. The second bill I'm introducing in 678, I'm introducing on behalf of Vice President Reynoso, the bill requires notification to appropriate community board and council member within 10 days after receiving an application to alter or demolish certain rent-regulated building or housing accommodations. This will provide council members with advance notice to assist tenants with transition housing or in the instance of wrongful eviction and free legal services. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Feliz, followed by Councilmember Caban.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I have the honor and the privilege of joining colleagues, including Councilmembers Brewer, Abreu, Salamanca, Williams, Ariola, and Joseph, and introduce legislation that will help promote fire safety in the city of New York. Legislation regulating the sale of e-bike batteries. Not all e-bike batteries, but specifically the unsafe, uncertified e-bike batteries that don't have the tools that prevent overheating and other malfunctions that have led to fires. This year, we've seen so many fires caused by e-bikes. Fires that have been destructive and fires that have been scary. These e-bike batteries have fluids that create powerful and difficult-to-extinguish fires. Fires that destroy our homes, and also fires that put the lives of all of our New Yorkers. We can't allow another tragedy to happen. This year, we've seen over 100 fires caused by e-bike batteries. Last month, we lost an innocent five-year-old in Harlem in an apartment fire caused by e-bike batteries. And even last week, an e-bike battery literally exploded while a person was using it. We're in a crisis, a crisis being caused, again, not by all e-bike batteries, but specifically the unsafe, uncertified e-bike batteries. And I'm proud to join all my colleagues to take action and help resolve that fire safety crisis. And I want to thank all my colleagues that have joined in this bill, and I'm looking very forward to working with this bill with all my colleagues and everyone who's affected, especially all the delivery workers. And I still have 23 seconds left, so I want to make a few additional points. Want to congratulate my colleague, my brother, Sean Abreu, on the very important bill. You know, I literally have no words to describe the gun violence crisis affecting the city of New York, and especially the borough of the Bronx. The gun violence crisis, and also how open it has become. You know, if we don't have -- and if I could use 15 more seconds.
I'll give you five.
If we don't have safety, we don't have much. And that reminds me of a park in my district, $15 million renovation, and people could only see it from a distance. People can't play with it. We need to take every single step possible, and I want to congratulate my colleague, Sean Abreu, for taking one of those steps. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Caban, followed by Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the two pieces of legislation I'm introducing. One is a resolution supporting the Prompt Stability Act. Thank you to Councilmembers Vilas, Gutierrez, and Hanif. And I'd ask folks to learn the name Shamika Crawford. In 2019, she was arrested based on a vaguely worded misdemeanor assault complaint filed by her sometime boyfriend, and the judge issued a full TOP, otherwise known as a pre-trial stay-away order, separating her from her children, forcing her out of her own night show apartment, and rendering her homeless for nearly three months. Now, Ms. Crawford is far from alone. For my time as a public defender, I know full well that NYPD protocol will frequently result in arresting both people involved in a domestic dispute, and whoever has the luck of getting in front of the judge first in arraignments gets the first order of protection issued and is allowed to go home first while the others shut out. And unsurprisingly, even though rates of domestic violence are similar across socioeconomic status and ethnicity, it's poor and working-class black and brown New Yorkers who tend to come before the court. And so let's honor Shamika Crawford and so many more like her and pass this resolution in support of promoting Pre-Trial Stability Act, which just calls for a hearing to determine whether that issue should be actually be in place. The other is Intro 657, Asset Seizure Transparency Law. Thank you, Councilmembers Stevens, Gutierrez, and Hanif. District Attorney seizes money and property left and right. There's no due process that's afforded when those assets are being seized. They do not get their property back, even if a case is dismissed. They might not even be the target of a search warrant or investigation, but their property is liable to be seized just because they live there. Transparency and accountability here are sorely needed. And during budget hearings, I want to remind folks that the DA's came in and told us that they don't have the funds necessary to implement vital criminal legal reforms, and they were pleading for ever more money from us on the council. And we can't assess the merits of these claims and pleas if we don't know the status of the potentially hundreds of millions of dollars of seized assets that they're sitting on, that they're free to use. So if DA's want more money from us come budget time, they're at least going to have to be open and transparent about what they're doing with these funds. So I encourage folks to support both of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Hudson, followed by Councilmember Bor.
Thank you. Today, I'm introducing the Age in Place NYC Package, aimed at making New York City a place where all older adults can age in place with dignity. The 10 bill package, six of which are being introduced today, includes legislation aimed at combating some of the most pressing issues facing older adults, including housing insecurity, healthcare access, cultural competency, and accessibility. What is always most concerning about discussions on aging is that our city is woefully behind in preparing for the rising influx of older adults in our city. And this has happened under the leadership of older adults. If you can believe it, our last seven mayors, from Abraham Beam to Eric Adams, were elected at age 50 or older. Our city's older adult population, which currently represents 20% of our city's entire population, will only grow as the baby boomer generation ages. A 2021 CUNY Graduate Center study reports that the population of adults ages 65 and older in New York will soar 25% between 2021 and 2040, compared to just 3% growth in the general population. Simply put, we should have prepared for an aging New York decades ago. We failed time and again, but it's not too late to turn the tide and make New York City a place that actually prioritizes older adults and ensures every older adult can age in place with dignity. This package does just that. I'll be circulating an email next week with a list of bills and urging you all to co-sponsor this package, because if you're lucky, you too will one day be an older adult. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Stevens.
I made the older adult. I just want to let you know, I'm doing just fine. A few things. Number one, the issue of asylum seekers. So to make a long story short, we've all been, many of us, to the meeting with them in different locations. To me, the main issue is the working paper problem. And I know the city, some may disagree, but I do think the city agencies and the nonprofits are doing everything they can to support these amazing families. However, the federal government is taking way too long on working papers. Everybody's eligible to work coming through the asylum seekers' locations and families. So we've got to get that straight. So there's a Resolution 307 and a letter that we're circulating. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for agreeing to sign it, to tell the federal government, "You must help us get these working papers." Number two, I know that many of us are concerned about the helicopters. I know we're tired of dealing with it. The only way to really, really deal with it is to get the federal legislation Safe and Quiet Skies Act of 2021, which many of our congressional delegations are supporting. So this is just saying, please pass it. I also want to thank Councilmember Feliz and others. We're all trying to figure out what to do about these batteries. Intro six five six would simply tell the fire department, please do a much better job of educating everybody on the challenges, and we will be working on other bills that could hopefully also address these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Stevens, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez.
Good afternoon, everyone. As we continue to reimagine workforce, youth workforce development across the city and coming off a historical summer for the largest allocation of S Y P, I'm excited to be introducing alongside with Councilmember Menon intro six eight six, that will create a public-private sector partnership and help expand S Y P. I just really, really would like for everyone to please sign on to this bill. This is about really encouraging our young people and helping them with career pathways as we continue to reimagine it. I had to say something because I know how I love kids, but that's it.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Gutierrez, who I believe is celebrating a birthday, and we'll go to Councilmember Lindley after that.
I am, thank you. North Brooklyn has been treated as a sacrificial zone by the fossil fuel industry for decades and is a key example of environmental racism in our city. Resolution three one-two calls on New York State and any other entities involved to protect environmental justice communities, including Cooper Park, a NYCHA development in my district, and all those living near National Grid's Fracked Gas Storage Depot on Newtown Creek by denying a permit to build two new fracked gas vaporizers at this facility. This is yet another phase of a much larger project that has pushed its way through majority resistance in our community, building a pipeline that will carry fracked gas through black and brown communities. Construction of the pipeline runs through the neighborhoods of Brownsville, Bed-Stuy, Bushwick, Williamsburg, and Greenpoint. The pipeline would affect one hundred and fifty-three thousand residents who live along the construction path and within the evacuation zone. It is unconscionable to build more infrastructure in these communities, raise rates for consumers for harmful projects that literally violate the environmental justice provisions of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. We are calling for a just and equitable transition away from decades of environmental racism that has plagued our neighborhoods. I want to thank all of my colleagues who have co-primed Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Kabon, Juan, Hudson, Ose, Nurse, Aviles, Hanif, Joseph, Baron, Lewis, and Narcisse. And I want to encourage all of my colleagues to join by signing on to this resolution. And I also just want to thank everyone who wished me happy birthday. Thank you.
Happy birthday. Enough, enough. We'll go to Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, colleagues and Madam Speaker. Today's my honor to introduce two pieces of disability-related legislation. First is intro six eighty-two, which would require the Mayor's Office for Persons with Disabilities to collect five-year accessibility plans from each New York City Department, Office, and Agency. And the second bill, intro six eighty-one, would create a workforce development program within the Mayor's Office for Persons with Disabilities. And as a social worker and now Chair of the Mental Health Disabilities and Addictions Committee, I've seen how the pandemic has disproportionately affected the nearly one million New Yorkers with disabilities. This legislation is about making good on the promise of equal access while helping the city on its road to recovery. I hope you can all join me in that fight. And lastly, I wanted to thank the Speaker for her leadership on this issue. In her State of the City address, she mentioned how persons with disabilities have been left behind and committed herself to making them a greater priority. The Speaker had a vision of making our economic recovery and landscape more inclusive, and we've arrived at this legislation today because of her team's tireless follow-up and consultation with advocates and stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Holden, followed by Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I introduce several bills to address issues affecting everyone in the city. However, I must first address the flooding in my district yesterday. A brief rainstorm was too much for the sewer system. The status quo of our infrastructure is not acceptable. Intro four four four, which I introduced in May of this year, would require the D E P to post the inspection, cleaning, and maintenance schedules of catch basins and sewers. While this bill will certainly not solve all of our flooding issues, it will improve transparency and allow the public and elected officials with oversight responsibilities to identify problems before flooding occurs. I urge my colleagues to sign on as cosponsors to this bill. The bills I introduce today will improve how we manage the homelessness crisis, improve parking enforcement with the use of technology, tackle the problems of vehicles registered out of state, map all methane leaks throughout our city, and close a loophole in our construction permit process. I urge my colleagues to review these good government bills, quality-of-life legislation proposals that will benefit all New Yorkers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Aviles, followed by Councilmember Mealy.
Hello. Today, I'm introducing a package of legislation designed to address some of the challenges faced by our public housing residents, who suffer most from the lack of oversight under funding of the New York City Housing Authority. Starting with res. three oh four, I'm calling upon my state-level colleagues to advance Assembly Bill ninety-four fourteen and Senate Bill fifty-eight oh seven. Put simply, this legislation would grant the city oversight power over NYCHA. Currently, all oversight has fallen squarely on HUD, and we have seen the disastrous effects of relying on our federal government to conduct proper oversight of the authority. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. The resolution I'm introducing today calls upon our state colleagues to make a change. With the passage of this legislation, NYCHA, which has had an abysmal track record, by nearly all measures, would be accountable to the New York City Council. Intro six forty-eight would require NYCHA to report on the number of vacant units within their portfolio and distinguish between habitable and unhabitable units. At a time when so many New Yorkers are struggling to find affordable housing and so many have waited years for public housing apartment, it is unacceptable for any unit to remain vacant. Reporting this information in a transparent manner will give us insight into how NYCHA is or is not filling vacancies or prioritizing repairs. Through collaboration with Assemblymember Harvey Epstein, who first intro'd this idea at the state level, I'm also putting forward intro six forty-nine, which would prohibit the Department of Sanitation from charging NYCHA fees for sanitation services that our residents are entitled to already as taxpayers. It defies common sense to ask an authority that is deeply in the red to continue to pay for something as basic as sanitation services. Again, my final piece of legislation is intro four sixty-four. Whoops, wow, that went quick, around responding to fundamental questions around the rental assistance and demonstration project. I'd love to talk to my colleagues more. And just a last note, the situation of e-bikes is indeed complicated, and many of us are deeply concerned and impacted. We are working on getting together a briefing where we can really, as a council, explore a well-balanced approach to addressing the e-bikes rather than knee-jerk policies that actually will harm the very people we seek to support. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Mealy, followed by Councilmember Krishnan, followed by Councilwoman Denowitz, and last but not least, Councilwoman Marte.
Thank you. Today, I'm introducing a bill with Councilmembers Joseph, intro six seventy-nine, implementing additional vehicle safety measures for seniors, calling for the installation of traffic calming devices adjacent to senior centers. This bill requires D O T to annually install at least one traffic calming device on no less than fifty blocks that are adjacent to senior centers or naturally occurring retirement communities, N R C. D O T must also report to the council by August first, 2023, and annually thereafter on the locations where the traffic calming devices have been installed. This proposed, this purpose of traffic calming is to lower vehicle speeds on neighborhood streets without restricting access. To think back, only on August eleventh, I had Miss Eleanor that turned one hundred and seventy, was hit by a car, and the young, whoever hit her, picked her up and put her back on the curb, and now she's in rehabilitation. As we know, senior centers are the epic centers for gathering of the older adults community. Traffic calming devices will slow vehicles, traffic, and decrease potential accidents. One of the differences of this mechanism from speed bumps is it doesn't require emergency vehicles to be impacted when responding to emergencies. I ask my colleagues to sign on to intro six seventy-nine. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Councilwoman Krishnan, followed by Councilwoman Denowitz, and Councilwoman Marte.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, I'll be introducing intro six eighty, which calls on the Parks Department to determine the feasibility, take surveys to determine the feasibility of creating micro parks and green spaces on vacant city-owned land near dead ends and highway entrance and exit ramps. This was a priority in legislation, a policy proposal mentioned by Speaker Adams in her State of the City address, and reflects the commitment of the council to expand green space in every way that we can in the city. We've seen how crucial it is, especially after the pandemic, to have green space in all our communities, especially ones that have some of the least amount of it in the city, and how urgent it is for our city to look at all possible ways to create such green space. So I urge all my colleagues to join on and sign on with me in support of intro six eighty. Thank you.
Thank you. We hear from Councilwoman Denowitz and Councilwoman Marte.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm introducing three bills, six fifty-nine, six sixty-six, six sixty-one. They're all great, but I want to speak specifically about six sixty. As many of you know, I was a special education teacher before I came here to the council. And in the public schools, we attempt to provide our students with disabilities as much support as possible. And then when they graduate, when our students graduate, all of those supports are gone, and many of them transition to college and struggle to find their place in college, struggle to get the same support in college that they got all throughout their school career. And this bill would require the Mayor's Office, people with disabilities, to establish a program to help those high school students with disabilities transition to their colleges, to CUNY, and continue to get their accommodations. This is especially important if we want to support our students with disabilities. Make sure that they have their continuum of services, make sure the D O E actually speaks to CUNY, they work together to support the most, the students who have the most needs. I encourage all of you to sign on to this bill to support our students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll hear finally from Councilwoman Marte.
Hi, everyone. I'm here to talk about intro six eighty-three, which will definitely help all of us, and it's a simple thing that will require Department of Buildings to have on their P W one application. The P W one application is the first application any developer fills out for Department of Buildings, and it will require them to ask the number of affordable units in the building and also the income eligibility for each affordable unit in the building. Why is that important? Many of us, when developers come, are guessing what they're going to propose to us. This gives us a floor to start off the bat. We know what the developer is going to build, we're going to know how much affordable units, and the income levels of those units. This will save us a lot of time, will save our community members a lot of stress, and it's just simple questions that will be on our application. So hopefully, everyone can support, and we can move quickly on this. Thank you all.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call Speaker Adrian Adams to close out today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two is hereby adjourned.
All right.